Yes, it's 5:30 if we can call the regular meeting of Amherst and Denver School to order my standing and hugging the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis here, Dr. Messer, or is it Mrs. Wappo here?
I'd entertain a motion to accept the agenda as it's presented, including any addendums you may have received today. Motion in a second, please. Is there discussion or comments on the recommendation to approve the agenda? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wappo.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Motion passed. Item five on the agenda this evening would be presentation. Mr. Chilien.
Thank you, Board of Education, and to Superintendent Bullmeyer. I just want to take this time, this time of the year, there's always a lot going on at the high school. So I'm gonna go over slide May Mia, just all the things going on. Also get to do a student highlight to one of our finest students at Steel, Aiden Workman. Jennifer Pedward also have a new business teacher to come into Steel High School. And then we have two presentations from two of our teachers, Janine New and Nikki Weaver, with a new SERV program we're gonna bring to Steel High School for next calendar year. And then really the reason why we're in this space and not the CLC, John Augustinelli is gonna finish us off with a robotics and automation presentation about just all the great things going on in this space right here, so. Like I said, going on, and it starts next Friday, we have our Armed Forces Ceremony. We have eight enlistees. And you haven't been there, this is, it'll be May 2nd at 1:45 in the main gym. A little smaller than we've had before, we've had as many as 19. But this year we have eight phenomenal, they're representing all the different armed forces. And it's in communication, in collaboration with, our city council comes, our board, you guys have all been there. We also have the American Legion coming, we have AMBETS coming, one of our parents, and also a member of the military, Joe Flock is gonna be our keynote speaker. So it's just a, really it's an awesome, we got the idea of, we used to do like athletic signings and it was, a few years ago we came up with the idea, let's do it for our military and our armed forces. So just an awesome celebration for them, and that starts on May 2nd. Jump into May 6th, we go to our senior awards banquet, that's at German's Villa. We also honor our military there, we honor all of our seniors for their scholarships that they're gonna be receiving, and also just for academic awards for their last four years of hard work here. Our career fair is on the 8th, and that is in the main gym. We have over 35 different vendors coming. Yeah, we talk about the three E's, deploy, enlist, enroll. We do a good job of bringing our colleges in, but this is an opportunity for our military recruiters also come to this. And we get a lot of, a lot of students who not only are maybe looking for careers, but also summer jobs. So that's really an awesome thing we have going on. And that is put on by Kathleen Santos and Kristen Klosik, two of our staff members. They do a great job with that. The pop show is May 17th, May 18th. And this year I'm pretty excited, it's actually Y2K's, which is music from 2000, which is kind of my area going back a little bit. So my daughter's a senior and she's singing the song she's never heard it before, but I'm pretty excited about that. So our music department always does a great job with that. Our underclassmen awards, we honor them at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, and 10 o'clock. Not only is that for academic awards, but that is also an opportunity. We allow our departments to kind of talk about a student, maybe they're the top in that department, maybe they're just somebody who showed a lot of growth, maybe they're just a pleasure to have in class. So it's just an awesome way academically to recognize, but also just sometimes recognizing awesome students. The 22nd is absolutely organized chaos, we have our graduation practice. We have 278 seniors who are going to be graduating this year. So we do a practice with them, and then we do a clap out, probably my, one of my, probably my favorite tradition we have. They walk through our schools, but then when they're in their robes, we take them over to Nord, and then we give a police escort up to AKH and Powers. It's just an opportunity for kindergarten teacher, the fifth grade teacher, their favorite art teacher, or wherever it might be. Just an opportunity, they walk through the halls, pop in circumstances, kind of play over the PA. It's just, it's really a feel-good. And really, you know, commencement, we get to see them here, but really it does start down at Powers, and Nord, and AKH. It's really, it's a culmination of 13 years of success, so. Pretty cool thing, and then at 6 o'clock that night, we meet at Powers Elementary, and we do a send-off, kind of like a parade, we go through town. We will be emailing and sharing that, but that's just a, just another great example of our students and community working together and celebrating their accomplishment. You-Knew-You Day, it's right between that day and commencement. Think of a high school field day. What we do there, we allow our teachers to kind of pick one thing they're excited about. So we have students that, maybe one teacher's like, hey, we're gonna do a jam session. Bring your drums, bring your guitar, whatever. One of our math teachers is like, I'm gonna show probability, we're gonna play poker, we're gonna play poker, we're gonna have fun with card games. I mean, whatever teachers wanna do, they create these lessons and then students sign up for them. So it's just kind of a cool day to get ready then for the next day, which is the 24th, which is the culmination. I told my wife in the beginning of May, I'll see you after commencement, and for a lot of reasons, as you can see, I mean, this is why it's go-go-go. But then at 10 o'clock at the Woolstein Center in downtown Cleveland, we will have our commencement ceremony with the class of 2025. So that's May-Ma Mia at Steel High School. And speaking of commencement, and speaking of all these great things, with us I have Aiden, go ahead, stand up, I'm gonna shout you out a little bit. Now, Aiden, I will, I will give an excuse for him, one of the things I talk about, he's so well-rounded in doing other things, multiple sport athlete, he's actually headed to volleyball practice, which is why he's not dressed up, but he's dressed up for where he's headed. But I wanna do my job, if I didn't tell you, he is, when I say one of our finest, very possibly the finest. Currently, right now, ranked first in his class. Things have not been final calculation, but right now he ranks number one out of that entire class. A national merit finalist. For those of you who maybe not know what a national merit finalist is, basically that is recognized on exams you took and the essay you submitted. You can get anywhere from $2,500 a year, so you will have some colleges saying you're a national merit finalist. You come to our school, we'll give you a full grant. So that is the company key is in. Did the math, there's a, a little over 300 national merit finalists in the state of Ohio, and we're looking at one of them right there. Phi Beta Kappa Society is, it dates back to the 1700s, going back to William &amp; Mary College. But the Phi Beta Kappa is a, the most prestigious society there is, and doing a little research, Condoleezza Rice, 17 past US presidents, Mark Twain, people like that is the company that Aiden will be joining. WSC Scholar-Athlete, not only in the SBC, but also all Ohio. Also News Channel 5, dust of the class. So they ask us, would you please represent, you know, send us, and it's hard, there's dozens and dozens that are worthy of this, but would you pick one student that really exemplifies and solidifies, you know, the best of the class? So Aiden will be, leave early May, they're doing that filming. So he will be on TV with the best of class, Channel 5. And in the spare time, I just put a few things he does there, academic challenge, lead crew, multi-sport athlete, tennis dress right now, Leo Club, student council president, National Honor Society. I couldn't have got going, but you run out of space, you can't read it, so. Just an awesome example of Steel excellence, so Aiden, congratulations.
I'll just say something real quick before I have to slip out to volleyball. Obviously, I've been to a lot of different schools, talked to a lot of different people for all the stuff that I do. But I have to say, like, at Steel, you really do, what sets it apart is the teachers and their attitude. And that's twofold, not only do they really care about the material that they teach, but they actually care about the students as well. I have Mrs. Marty and Mrs. New here that I've been privileged to have over the past couple of years, and they are great examples of that. And I'll just share what I'm doing in the future, I just committed to Alabama two or three days ago on a full ride to there, so. That's all from me, thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Before I, before I turn it over to our, our next teachers who I wanna shout out, you know, Aiden, Aiden really said, you know, it's the teachers. You know, when I, when I kind of go over that May Mia, and you look, and you know, I mentioned the college fair and, you know, the military signing, everything going on here, you recognize, we have school counselors here, you know, we talk about the Steel team. And we couldn't do it without our teachers and our staff and our faculty, they're top-notch, so thank you for allowing us to do that. And speaking of top-notch facilities and programs, I'm gonna turn it over right now to two other rock stars, Nikki Weaver and Janine New.
Hi, Janine, I teach English here at Steel. I'm Nikki Weaver, I'm an education specialist, and I'm also one of the program coordinators for SERV. So basically what SERV is, it stands for Students Engaged in Responsible Volunteering in Education. This is a senior-only class that students have to apply and fill out a pretty lengthy application, write a letter as to why they wanna be part of the program, and get some teacher recommendations. With the thought, well, with the purpose of being in this program that we will be doing service to our community tied to our English. Yeah, so for next year, it's only be the last two periods of the day, and they would report to class Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays for two periods. Part of that would be the English 12 credit, part of that would be a civic engagement elective credit. And then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, the students will be placed at the following locations, anywhere from like Main Street Amherst, to Neighborhood Alliance, to Goodnight of Lorraine County. So we've partnered with a lot of different Lorraine County nonprofits. And the whole point of this is just to get kids out there to help within their community, because a lot of them don't know anything other than maybe just this little bubble of Steel, but there's so much help that needs to be had. So our students are gonna be doing anything at these locations, from cleaning and organizing to at Goodnight of Lorraine County, they're gonna be actually building the beds that will be delivered to the children in Lorraine County. They're gonna be helping organize Lorraine County events, the Air Force events. And within there, they'll earn, we'll be doing projects, we'll be using Leave for Change and using their program where as soon as complete their own service learning group project, they'll also be able to learn how to apply for grants, and then give a grant to supply the project that they want. And within there, they can also earn free points towards an industry-recognized credential. And within here, I'm also working on some other pathways for students to help lead their graduation competency. So this is a very, like, inclusive class for all students, whether they want to be a teacher, or they wanna join and help over at Powers, or they wanna just work around other people and kind of learn some of those communication skills that we need to build on. And the incredible part of this, we'll need a really nice group and family within this program. Yeah, so we have about 20 students signed up for next year, so these are just some of the students. So you'll see the shirt, the circle on our desk there, they designed it, and then we made it in the maker's space here for our students for next year. So we're really excited, and then like Nikki said, not only did they earn the elective credit, plus the English 12 credit, but they also earned one of the seals that is required for graduation. So you're doing a lot of good stuff, so we're excited for them to get out of here next year.
Hi, everybody. Am I just gonna go?
I don't even get to shout him out. You guys are all gonna be exhausted when he's done talking. Exhausted in a good way.
So, yeah, so again, we're here to talk about the new advanced manufacturing, again, most of you can refer, we've got a large footprint, $1.6 million. So if you've gotten some of the equipment put in here, actually I'm glad, because you would not have fit in here. We're gonna have this, there's like, there's some crates down the hallway, you see, I mean, it's like eight crates, like $610,000 is sitting in this crates right now. They're coming from Georgia to install them, and it's gonna go right in here, okay? So there would be no sitting room, I'm actually kind of glad they're a little late, actually, I wanted you guys to see it, but wouldn't fit anybody. So with that, now, you have some two students, they have both been through the, we have the industrial robotics, this is level one, our first class, and then what's called programmable logic controllers, it's the second class, and they're currently both, they've done, on their end, they're finishing it up. So I wanted to lead up to these two students, I have McKenna Bosworth and then Charlie Hupus right here, and they're gonna talk to you a little bit about their experience, so can I take one?
Hi, I'm McKenna Bosworth, I'm a sophomore. I took this class obviously because of its excitement last year, like trying to get my students to join, and you did a great job. It was exciting, it was really what helped me to do it. I would say that this is like, this class has helped me make me a better student anyways, but I'd say that you're like a better test taker because of the way that, like, the thinking that you learned to use, and it just, it really helps you, like, in all aspects of life, like.
My name's Charlie, I'm a senior here, and over a year ago, I started taking Mr. A's class in industrial robotics, and one of my buddies told me that the class is fun and you play with robots. So I was like, you know what, why not? And I joined the class, and now over a year later, I'm still taking Mr. A's class, still having a blast, and have fun with robots. So, and, and if it wasn't for Mr. A, I wouldn't know what I would be doing in college. So currently now, I am, I just applied, I applied, but I just enrolled in Miami University for robotics, so. And if it wasn't for Mr. A and his help with the class and all the stuff that he does for the school, I wouldn't know what I'd be doing for college. Thank you, Mr. A.
And a little thing to brag about real quick, he's one of the two guys, it's about him and three of the guys who went onto this company, manufacturing company in Avon called Rebuild Manufacturing, CDI. And the HR person, Angela, she just says, I do not give compliments lightly, but your students were amazing. Like, I wish I could show everybody the email, I am not talking this up at all. And she was like, they can come back at any time, and actually, he's gonna apply for an internship. Are you already applying? So I'm pretty sure he's gonna get it, I can't process anybody, I'm pretty sure, he's like six now, they're kind of loading it down, and then she's like, you guys can come back anytime. So that was good. So that was just a little bit of some of the stories, now I have to like, I have to just say this real quickly. I've gotta show you a little bit of it quick, you guys wanna see just a little bit of it quick, do something, you gotta see just a little taste of it. So I'm gonna go over here, and we'll do this one, come up out of here. You guys will stay, I'll show you two of them, you can see like there's, I didn't know how this was gonna go, but you can see there's sort of a color box, right? And so you've got the yellow robots and the white robots, so you have them coming for you then, so just so you know. So one of these yellow ones here, I've come back on this one, I programmed some of them already, and I didn't know how this was gonna be set up, but. I'll show you some features, these fences around all of these, so what the students get is credentials, is they take these controllers right here, and you learn how you, so it's called programming and operation. So, you know, I mean, this is like a $6,000 controller, this thing right here. Okay, do not drop this, and then hold it. We go through this, and then you start moving it, you know, you learn all the settings in this, and so if I just kind of set something up here, you know, all the high, high pitch noises, and you learn about different speeds, and I'm still trying to tweak it out when the guys come in and kind of bump it up a little bit past the safety standards it's supposed to, but we're working on that right now. So they learn, hey, how do you move this thing up and down, and then you learn how to program it. So we do a few more switches on it, alright, switching on here, I go ahead and I shift a few things, we reset this guy, okay. Now that this is ready, you can kind of, some of you can see like there's a red light on right here. So since there's no fences, we have a safety sensor under here, and that's what's different about these yellow versus the white. So if I go ahead and I hit this green button, alright, you can kind of hear that high pitch. Now I'm gonna start getting myself away from it, it's now green, and it's going to, let me speed this up a little bit. So it stopped again, alright, so I have this program, it's a simple program where it's gonna go and pick up some of this little squishy center blocks over here, and then move it around. So they're gonna program this, they can tell where to go, what to do. But students can get up to nine different industry credentials through our pathway, okay? So we're gonna have a total of four classes, again, now, each one of these credentials will cost you about $2,000 if you were to go take it. It's all free for you guys, okay? So I went, I got certified at these companies, I am now certification for them, to train your employees. We're actually looking at having some of the companies that bought the equipment from trained at our facilities now. So they said, hey, we can't find enough teachers like me, could we bring our employees to your equipment? And we'll, hey, you guys, like, can we do this? So it's like, hey, so we're looking at, I talked to Mr. Bullmeyer, and he's like, I think we can do that. So we're just exploring so many different things. Now with this one, they've got a white robot over here too, what we're looking at is if I go over here, I mean, this one, alright, I can go ahead now, alright, and I can take this by hand, and I can move this thing anywhere I want to. And so if I wanna go ahead, like, there's a lot of automated welding going on. And it's just really hard to take that and to move it, so I'm gonna go ahead and get it just the right angle, I can move this thing and weld it, it's gonna repeat that process over and over. We also have these type of cameras, it's called Vision, it can sense different pieces and parts, and it will go and look for those pieces and parts. Again, another $6,500 piece of equipment just added on that camera, just for that. Again, this is the top-of-the-line best thing that we're gonna be getting here, and if you can actually go to the next slide over here, just to kind of update some of this thing, so those are some of the equipment. But so far, again, we started here, and this has been going on for just a little bit over a year. So 2024 in January is our first class of industrial robotics, and since then we've had 38 students earn industry credentials in the Fannick already, okay? Next year, we currently have 84 students enrolled for the 25, 26 full year. So again, this is, we're maxing out at every spot that we can, so really excited about it. We still have additional funding coming, we just put an additional request in for another $80,000 specifically for those robots and all the end-of-arm tools that can go on there, just to make it, just to make it just feel as much as like you can to the actual facilities and stuff. We've got, every time we have credentials, the state will reimburse us for two of our different classes. One of them's Rockwell, and Allen Bradley, and that's the other one's the Fannick. And again, this year we're gonna be giving $7,700 just for 14 students. We probably spent about $100 a student, so you got about a $6,300, like, this returns from the state from that too. So again, we're starting to see that it's, as it's growing, it still gets money back from the state. I'm working through a company called Ohio TechNet, and they're sponsoring us as well too, and they've given us $2,600 to our online learning. So again, just a lot of good stuff, and then you can see the community partnerships here. We've toured all of these companies this year, alright, this is just where we've gone, our students have gone, there's some shape or another. And starting next year, we're having a pre-apprenticeship program from the state of Ohio, like, it's going to be an official pre-apprentice. So a company called Lorraine County Partnership, the Sackern Partnership, they're sponsoring us, and that is getting up and running. So it's Chris Brown, he's the head, we're meeting with a few other people. And just, I just, again, I can talk, I can talk to you right here, here on, but that is just some of the great things that we have.
You're a little exhausted, right? And I tell you, you're really. But just an example, you know, we had Aiden in here, and no wonder with the teachers, with the programs we have, you know, where there's a, well, there's a way you can see where our students are growing, finding their own passion, whether it be with SERV, whether it be in robotics, whether it be in our arts, whatever it might be, you can just see that it's, you know, their options are limitless, so. Thank you for allowing me to share, and good evening.
At this time, like, Mr. O'Dell, our human resource director, come on up and share, he's gonna share with us some new employees that are brought this agenda tonight, what we want to do upfront when captive audience, and I'll turn over to Mr. O'Dell.
Thanks for having me, I mentioned a lot of people each year, this is my favorite time of year, just for the fact that we get to bring new faces into Amherst, and it'll be the next generation of the next teachers that are leading some of these great programs that we're already talking about. So I have some introductions that I wanna make, the first one being, she's not able to be with us today, but Angela Cresepp. And I'll explain why she's not able to be with us today, but she sent in some information, so I'll read through it. Angela will be our next Amherst Junior High band teacher, as well as the assistant band director for how for where she comes this year. She comes to us from Las Vegas, that's why she's not able to be here. But she did visit us for her interview during her spring break, so very good reason we're excited to have her, so we'll just read a little bit of what she sent in. Angela grew up in Avon, Ohio, graduated 2009, went to Bowling Green State University for her bachelor's in music education and jazz studies, where she played trumpet. After working on her masters in Texas, she moved to Las Vegas in 2014, and started teaching in her performance career. For the last 11 years, she's been teaching music K through 12, including middle school, and most recently high school band, for the last 10 years. She's also been fortunate enough to have an amazing performance career, as you can imagine, in Las Vegas. She's worked for Grammy-winning artists like Boyz II Men, Nate Carter from Backstreet Boys, Joey Kattong, and Saint and others. She also is a member of the Las Vegas Brass Band, performing as a solo, Corinettis, for the past eight years. Music's always been a huge part of her life, and she looks forward to the opportunity of passing on to others. She is so excited to move back to Ohio, her family still lives in the area, and she's looking forward to being closer to them again. She included some quotes of herself, so I'll just quote her directly. But I have a two-year-old son, Ben, and he is my old world. I am grateful to be able to give him the experiences I had to grow up, like going to the lake, Friday night football games, spending days at the Cleveland Zoo, and exploring the natural parks. I also have two dogs, Bailey and Kona. They're two beautiful dogs. Black Lab, Chocolate Lab, you can imagine it, Bailey and Kona. But they're both trained facility dogs, they work as therapy dogs in their current school. Bailey also has experience working in hospitals and children. She loves, Angela loves staying active by running with her dogs and cycling. She enjoys reading.
That's why you can't see the dogs.
Yeah. And she also quotes, "I'm really excited to join the staff of Amherst Schools. I'm eager to be part of the tradition of music at Amherst, and I can't wait to help grow the band program and the positive school culture on campus. I hope you forward to helping our students explore and discover music and themselves while learning teamwork and leadership skills for myself." Welcome, Angela. She's gonna be watching online, so. Okay, we have some in-person, let's start up front, that's right. So we have Susan Davis. So Susan comes to us from Lorraine Schools, Longfellow School, where she's taught sixth grade math the past four years, and prior to that, a preschool school for 12 childrens. Graduated at Penn State University. She was a police officer for almost four years before going back to school, to Ashland University, to get her teaching license to follow in her parents' footsteps. They're both retired teachers. Her favorite part of teaching is being part of each student's life story. She wins in Kiron, her own math, daughter Savannah and Reagan, and their yellow lab Duke. Susan is super excited to be a comet and to teach in the district where her mother attended and graduated from. Welcome. Rebecca, Rebecca Rabbani. Rebecca lives in Avon Lake with her husband of seven years, Brian, along with her three children, Nolan, which is five, Ella, three, and Natalie, four months. Natalie's having a checkup right now, dead. They weren't able to be there for a good reason. They enjoy hiking, swimming, and are constantly doing some home renovation projects. Rebecca's bachelor is from Nashville University in 49 Math, VLA, and her master's is from CSU in educational technology. She spent the last 12 years teaching math at Longfellow Middle School in Lorraine, and she is super enthusiastic to join the Amherst community, where she feels education is valued, and everyone is committed to student success. She's excited to serve the community and rep some green gold. Thank you. Last one closest, let's go Mary. Mary. C. Mary P. Mary has a family of five, her husband Rich, and children Richie, who's 21, who's gonna be graduating at Saber University this May. Joey, who's 17, will be graduating from Cedarburg High School. And she's, oh, there he is. And Abby, who's 12, who teaches the sixth grader. They do have an amazing dog named Wiley, another dog. As a family, they enjoy music. Rich teaches private trumpet lessons. Son Richie, who's a graduate, will be graduating with musical, theater, and marketing degree. Son Joey plans to attend BGSU to study music education. And Abby also sings and plays saxophone. And they've all participated in many musical theater shows together. Mary spent 13 years before coming to Amherst Pittsburgh School Year at Sheffield Lakes, Cedarburg City Schools for 13 years. And she and her family are rollercoaster enthusiasts and enjoy going to Cedar Point, as well as various other theme parks during the summer months. Welcome to work, Mary. Matt Wolcos. Also has joined us this past year at Amherst Junior High in Alton South, Lake Mary. And we're happy that both of them will be able to come and work full-time next year in those capacities. All right, so Matt. Matt lives in Overland with longtime girlfriend Megan. And their dog Cooper. He grew up on a small farm in Lorraine County. He's worked on the farm and/or in construction for over the summer, around the past few years. Matt has been a science teacher or a STEM teacher for over decades, mostly in Wellington Schools, prior to joining Amherst this year, as the dimension is on from Southern. Loves learning about science and technology. His hobbies include pickleball, biking, fishing, and cooking. Welcome to work, Matt Wolcos. And last one, at least, we have Jennifer. Jennifer Pepworth. She is going to be our business teacher here and entrepreneurship teacher here at Steel High School. Comes to us from the JVS. Jennifer is married to her husband of 25 years, Chris. They have three children, Josh, age 22, NOSU business graduate, last year in '24. He's working in management training at 84 Lumber. Samantha, age 19, who's a nursing student at EDSU. And Delaney, age 14, attends Midview Middle School. Fun fact about their family is that so far, they have all worked in an ice cream business at some point. And the youngest, Delaney, helps to start her first job in that business this summer. Which one? She'll be at?
She'll be at Follow's Creamery, where my old Asheville other daughter works, so she kind of looked her in, so yeah.
All right, so in her free time, Jennifer enjoys traveling and cheering on her youngest daughter, who plays club volleyball. She enjoys time outdoors camping and/or visiting lakes and beaches. And she also loves hanging out with their, it's what? Golden doodle pups. Blue and Bella. How old?
Eight.
Eight?
Yeah. They're fox, but they're, they're still little babies.
Very good. And Jennifer shares, "I'm really excited to join the team at Amherst. I love to learn, and I'm excited to share my knowledge and business experiences with students." One of the unique things with Jennifer as well when we were interviewing, is she has industry experience and knowledge on civic care, the O D company. And so it's gonna be nice to be able to share with our students, not only had a teaching capacity, but then also the industry-related experiences. Welcome to work.
Is there any other presentations you need to incorporate at this moment?
Well, we're part of the district.
Before we move on to the hearing of the public, we have the federal grant application that we have to do.
Do you want that separate from this?
It comes before the hearing of the public.
Go ahead.
Mr. Molnar.
Yeah, does anyone have any questions about our federal programs or grants that we receive for this year or next year? So this is item six, if anyone's following me, and Jennifer. I thought we were adding something different. Okay. If not, I think we're. We just have to show and tell everyone, if anyone has any questions, any of those federal grant programs, you have the opportunity to ask those questions. They are listed there on item six. If there's no discussion, we'll just move on. Which would be hearing, you have a question? Item seven is hearing of the public, and no one has signed in to address us, so we would move on. Item number eight, this evening. Which would be the treasurer's report. Any treasurer?
So treasurer's office update, longtime employee, 11-year dedicated servant to Amherst School District, Suzanne Harlow, in the payroll department within the treasurer's office, has retired at the end of March. We thank her for her dedicated service. And then Victoria Jantsch, please stand. All right, so she also has a connection to ice cream shop. So I just wanted to say that. So Victoria is the new payroll specialist in the treasurer's office. She started today. Thankfully, the board allowed us to have her start today. She's newest member of the treasurer's office team, we're excited for her to come to us. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Kent State University, and four and a half years as a one-woman HR payroll department in industry locally here. We're just really excited to have her here. I think she's gonna be a sponge and fit in really well in the treasurer's office. And would you like to say a couple of words?
Oh, geez, I'm just really excited to get back in the Amherst. I graduated here in 2015, and just seeing what this would form into me, because I knew when I was here. So I'm just really excited to learn and grow back in Amherst.
Welcome. Okay. And then I just wanted to do a quick rundown of the treasurer's webpage update. And this is all kind of a result, the enhancements on the treasurer's webpage are a result of the strategic plan that we completed last year. In an effort for increased transparency, a few months ago, we put up a complete levy history, as far back as I could find it. We have temporary and permanent appropriations there for the current year. We have started putting the monthly financial packet up as a single document that you can scroll through and file along this evening. And what is in the monthly financials is a cash reconciliation of all the funds and accounts that the district holds. There is a financial summary by fund and special cause center that is a document. It's a report that's produced from our U S C R P system. And then there are two forecast reports, one for general fund and one for the O16 emergency levy fund, which we'll talk about that more later. And then the last document in the monthly financials is a checklist thing of all the electronic checks we've issued in the prior month and the physical checks that we've issued to vendors. And then the final thing that's on the website, which we've always been doing, are a forecast, a single document, the face of the forecast, the numbers that most people associate with the forecast, and then about a 30-page document of assumptions and graphs and all that stuff. So that's just the treasurer's webpage. We invite you to go take a look at it before we change it all with the new website this next year. How soon will that be, Mr. Wolcos?
Ready, go. August 1st.
August 1st, okay. Next page. And then just kind of a reminder, I know that we had texted and come to a, I'll say a general consensus, that we were going to have the board retreat this summer, heavy finance. We're not going to have any outside speakers or team building or anything like that. It'll be heavy financial. We're planning that for June 17th at Marymount Steel Creative Learning Center. That still good with everybody? If so, we'll get the notice out tomorrow. All day, 9:5. As long as we need. I mean, is 8 o'clock too early to start? Yes. Is 9 o'clock okay? So 9:00 AM to 4:00. So the posting will go up tomorrow. Next page. All right, so this, we're going to do an ARC recap this evening. If you recall, the ARC stands for American Rescue Plan. And ESR is, we associate some of the grants received with ARC ESR, American Rescue Plan. And ESR stood for elementary and secondary schools emergency relief, which, if you recall, was federal stimulus funding arising from the COVID-19 epidemic. I try never to say COVID-19, but I've said it twice this evening already. So we'll jump to the next slide. So operationally, most expenditures in the district come from the general fund. 001, it captures all of the expenditure, operational expenditures for the district. There are personnel costs, purchase services, supplies, software, curriculum materials, instructional equipment, and all of that. So all of those items defrayed the cost from the general fund. We were able to move those expenditures into the ARC ESR fund, which is unusual. We'll come to another slide in a little bit explaining what supplement versus supplant is. But we were able to defray, until the $2.6 million was expended, we were able to defray expenditures that otherwise would have been general fund expenditures. And then the final expenditure was about $110,000 of the restroom and special education classroom upgrade this last year was defrayed to the ARC ESR fund. Next. Why don't you take this?
So we've just broken down for you $2.6 million that we received for all of the programs. And you can see in the columns that we were to share that, share those expenditures in four categories, related to physical health, meaning academic needs, operational continuity, and mental health. Within those four buckets, you could choose then to put that toward salaries, which you can see the first couple lines are salaries and benefits, retirements. Also purchase services, which would usually be a purchase service outside of the school district, but personnel you bring in. The last two lines are supplies, materials, so it's paper towels or cleaning supplies. And then capital property, which, as Amy mentioned, you can see over an operational continuity. There's money there, about $283,000, that was put toward the new restroom project here at Steel. So if you look at the overall.
There was also some tech refresh early on in ARC ESR, so.
So just real quick, essentially, if you look at the total column, about $2 million was spent on personnel, and about $600,000 was spent on material supplies, capital, and restroom project. Right? Any questions on that for the board? Go ahead.
And then I wanted to make the distinction between supplement versus supplant. Our federal revenue streams, we are able, by federal code of federal regulations, able to supplement general operational expenditures with the federal grant revenues that we receive. Couple minutes ago, we talked about IDEA, Early Childhood Special Ed, all of the different revenue streams that we receive, Title I, Title II A, et cetera, et cetera. So normally, it only supplements general fund expenditures, but we were able to take expenditures funded out of the general fund and supplant them into ARC ESR. Total admiration from the norm, okay? And Mike, do you want to cover this one, or do you want me to?
I think, real quick, so you can just see the different positions we use for personnel staffing. So for example, the age age science of steel teacher, if you go back to the last slide, which you won't, but that's lined up with meaning academic needs. Whereas, for example, the Nordian students was actually for operational, which was for help with Nord and the, you know, behaviors and discipline and so on, the building. So you can see the different various positions, literacy instructional coach, powers wellness teacher, guidance counselor, district social worker, and custodian. So those were the positions that we use our ESR money for. Just pointing out that the powers wellness teacher was new to the district in that time period as a result of the funding directly, and so was the district social worker. The other position, what?
The additional.
The additional district social worker. So as Amy mentioned, the other positions were already in place, that we could supplant and support those with the funding. Those other positions were renewed because of the conditions of pandemic, what we were going through at the time. Those two positions are still within the district right now. Any questions for that?
Next. All right, so that concludes our ESR presentation. Would you like me to move forward with recommendations?
Item nine, yes, please.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Walker. So I would ask the board this evening to approve or amend the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of March 17th. And then again, in the March financials, there's bank reconciliation, a financial summary, forecast budget reports for general fund and O16 fund. And my note here is that based on the Uniform School Accounting System manual revisions by Auditor of State this year, we are no longer required to transact emergency levy revenue and expenditures in the O16 fund. So five years ago, we were required to, so create the O16 fund, move the emergency levy revenue into the emergency fund, also transacted expenditures out of the emergency levy that we, quote, otherwise would not have been able to fund out of the general fund. And so now we're not required to do that. I've receiveded monies, revenue into the O16 fund this year, but not transacted any expenditures other than auditor and treasurer fees. So I'll be moving that revenue and that expenditure into the general fund. And so the board will only be receiving one forecast budget report for the general fund, which includes O16 emergency levy revenue. Then the final financial for March, our AP checks and ACHs issued for the month of March. Next slide. The next big item, which is item 9C, is a resolution for accepting the tax rates and amounts from the Lorraine County Budget Commission. And so this is something the board only sees once a year, and it comes on the tail of the tax budget. The tax budget is approved and submitted to the county budget commission by January 20th of each year. That's legislative law. And then that's submitted to the county budget commission and approved typically before the end of March, it was. And then this document, there's about four pages of both legal writing and tables. That this is listing all of the voted levies, the millage amounts, the effective and the tax collection amounts that are expected to be received in this following year, starting July 1, 2025. Next. So this is the slide showing Schedule A, if you're looking at your exhibit in the Google Drive. What is highlighted up there is the 5.2 mils inside, that is inside the 10 mil limitation. And you see the next two lines down, that our inside millage for the general fund will now be 3.2 because as part of the tax budget, the board requested that the budget commission move two inside mills for general operating into the permanent improvement fund. And that's the two mils, permanent improvement, half-year collected, inside mills, January, June, two mils. And then you'll see beside that 2.5 mils is the voted. And that represents the PI replacement levy that was approved for 2.5 mils back in November of 2023. The next slide is the listing of all of the levies. Current expense levies are all general fund. There's the permanent improvement levy, two and a half voted mills. There's the emergency levy, and then there's the Amherst Public Library. And then the board will vote on this, and then I will certify the resolution and send. And then the board will vote on this, and then I will certify the resolution and send it off to the budget commission tomorrow. Next slide. The next three things are appropriation, appropriation changes, and there's too many to list on the slide. We have a general fund increase, which reflects the emergency levy, 4.1 million moving into the general fund. We have changes to all the honor tab funds, and that is for the 2000 bond, which built AJH. There's 2020 library bond, and then there's the 2017 bond assurance that built Powers for us. And then the emergency levy, we're reducing that down to zero, the appropriation. We are increasing the connectivity grant, and we are increasing Title III, Title I, Title IV A, and Title II A. We had, again, late year reallocations from the Department of Education and workforce. So these are in the Google Drive, if anybody cares to see the detail, it's right up here. And then we have a then and now invoice that is for the homegrown contracting that was doing the work on the storybook trail. There was not a purchase over in place before we received the PF or before we received the invoice. And then finally, we have the transfer from permanent improvement to the O-34 maintenance fund. This was part of the BAO language when the 2000 bond was passed by the community. And then that, that transfer was deferred until we were actually building Powers. So for about six years now, this will be the seventh, transferring $272,000 and change per year from PI into the O-34 maintenance fund. And the O-34 maintenance fund can only be used to, to record maintenance expenditures for Amherst Junior High and Powers Elementary. And those are the only two co-funded building projects we've had with Ohio Facility Construction Commission. I think there's one item on the last two items. Medical and dental rates for the, the 25, 26 school year. The LERC health insurance and prescription renewal was six and a half percent. Came in much better than anticipated back in December and January. Dental, three percent, pretty moderate renewal. Vision, fully insured plan has zero percent renewal increase for this next year. And then there are several different donations that I asked the board to approve.
Do they entertain a motion for Treasurers' Recommendations nine A through H? You're agreeing to second that, please. Your motion and a second, is there discussion or comments?
I just wanna, Amelia, would you like to just say why, just to remind people why you're talking about the library?
Okay, at one point in time, the library collections came through the district. The library is a school district library. And they really have their own governing board, which is approved by the district. But it is considered a school district library. There are, I believe, three different types of libraries in Ohio or Vice Co. One's county library system, one's school district library, and honestly, I can't tell you what the third one is. But this is a public school district library. So the budget commission records their revenue as part of the school district. But those monies do not flow through the district anymore, and they haven't for probably eight to 10 years. Is that it? Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments on the Treasurers' Recommendations? Hearing none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mr. Zappala?
Hi.
Dr. Messer?
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel? Mr. Aghol?
Hi.
And in town, tonight's agenda would be superintendent's report.
First, I want to just thank everyone for attending and welcome our new employees that are joining the team. Again, those of you that are still here, we respect your time with families, so if you need to pop out anytime, you're more than welcome to do that. But thank you for staying, and we appreciate you being here with us. So the first thing I want to talk about real quick is last month at the board meeting when we were at NORD, we had a presentation by Eric Resnick from Valtterford, Ohio, and the Ohio Coalition for Equity Adequacy in School Funding. And so he was presenting information about Amherst itself and about where we're at as far as the lawsuit that they have against the state of Ohio to properly fund public schools. And so we were taken into consideration of joining that movement and that actual initiative to actually join ourselves and join our name to the initiative. And so the resolution to join, and there's a agenda to join on before the agenda this evening. Again, we've not discussed whether we were joining or not, but it's on there for us to join if you'd like. So this time, I want to give the board an opportunity to discuss them all themselves. If that's something that you'd like to see us do as we move forward to support public education and fight for Amherst students and families and communities.
And that falls under Business Recommendations B, which you all received the correspondence shortly after this March seventeenth board meeting. In a couple of days, from that perspective. So we will take a vote on that this evening, but if you would like to have any discussion about it, Michael and Amy, at this point in time, if it's part of his presentation, you can certainly do that.
I think any questions that we discussed, we're okay, you're all okay?
And to put it into context, the cost to join, this is approximately what it costs to join Ohio School Board Association, which is approximately $8,000. It's not.
Okay, what else, Mr. Maldon?
Um, just want to point this out because again, Mackenzie Hall, our curriculum director, and I were on the, on the news. So when it becomes a, a story in the community, we like to sometimes address it, discuss it, and share with you. So we were on News Channel Five as far as the high dosage tutoring that was eliminated. Actually due to the state of Ohio's, I guess, federal government shutdown there, leftover ARP ESR funds that we talked about this evening. And so when they kind of put a halt to those federal funds going to Ohio to finish out, I guess, the rest of the year, Ohio put a halt to the high dosage tutoring support. So I just wanted to just thank Mackenzie Hall. Also, we worked with our teachers association and union to talk about how we might be able to support kids for the next couple of weeks. We have some great wonderful, of course, volunteers who are stepping up. We're going to continue that tutoring in-house obviously for the next couple of weeks with those volunteers. When we looked at the actual numbers and how we broke it up, really, we were really looking for maybe one or two volunteers per grade level that can maybe work in the standard. So it wasn't really overwhelming, but it is an extra thing that adds to their plate. Although our instructional coaches set up the plate to provide the actual instruction, like the lesson plans and so on. So really, we just needed the great teachers to deliver. So I just want to thank Mackenzie Hall for stepping up, all our teachers for stepping up. We'll do that for the next couple of weeks and help finish out the year. Any questions on that? Yes?
I have a question, but I just wanted to thank the teachers for stepping up. Mrs. Hall as well, or accommodate students, because my family was personally affected by this. So thank you all very much for doing that. That was a great program. And I love the intervention period at NORD. It's beneficial for all students, so thank you very much for that.
A real quick update from the Facility Advisory Committee that met the last couple of months. We had three meetings in February, March, and April. Each of those meetings were at different buildings, so we could tour the buildings, and we really did what-if scenarios. What if, when we were at Steel, what if we, with increasing enrollment and, and if the Ohio facility construction company came to us with money to maybe do a project? What if we build a new high school then in March? What if we build a new junior high? And then what if we build a new elementary school? Just looking at all the options with the committee. We discussed those options. On the last meeting on April fifteenth, Brandon Anderson from the Ohio Facility Construction Commission came and gave a quick presentation about OFCC, how it works, and our past history. And really explained, so the community knows, really explained that we've been a part of the same project since 2002, when we built AHH. Everything since then, Powers, other renovations to Steel and NORD, et cetera. That's all a part of the same project we're doing with them, just different phases. So that was a nice explanation, probably for our committee. In looking at that, we discussed those three different scenarios of different buildings. And we focused on two new school options, mostly the high school option and the elementary option. Within those two options, there are six different configurations. Like how would we configure Powers Elementary, NORD, Junior High, the new building? What grade levels would go where? So we narrowed down to six different school configurations. Brandon Anderson from OFCC was actually very, very, and Tracy, you were there, Mark was there, very like supportive. Like, these are great ideas and great, great options and configurations. He's going to go back and take them and look at what, how that would work with OFCC standards, and also possibly come back in the future with costs, what that might cost for each of the configurations. So nothing for the board to do now, but we are, as a board, at the retreat on June seventeenth, we're going to take a look at all of those configurations. And again, we're just kind of getting ahead of the curve. We discussed, we're number fourteenth in line for state funding, which could be two years out, it could be even five years out. You don't know where that falls, how much they put in the program, the state puts the program in the budget, and then how many different projects they complete, whether it's a couple $20 million projects or one urban district has one, two, $300 million. So we will see how that goes, but we're getting ahead of the game to kind of prepare, kind of what-if scenarios with the board as well. Just for you to discuss as we move forward, what some options you might have, what are you kind of leaning toward. But again, we all recognize that things will change with enrollment, things will change with the cost of those things, et cetera. So it'll just be helpful of us prepare for the future, and we'll talk on June seventeenth. Any questions about that?
I had a question about, about the layout or the facilities that you were going to propose. But I do think that we should try to have an update on what we think the future enrollment is going to look like, sooner than later. Because there's more and more and more development that's happening in the township from that perspective. And I know when we started this process or this talking about that, it was going to have minimal impact of 200 students total. I firmly disagree with that when I see what's happening. Because there's probably 25 houses already up in the one development back there with people already living. With another proposal of another development coming off of Middle Ridge Road, 58. Another one going at the corner of Ogallin Road and 113. Those are all going to affect, and they're not age restricted communities. There's only one age restricted community in the whole deal in the township, okay? And that's about one of the whole unit. But I do think that it will be an impact of much more than 200 students. And we don't know that, but I think that we should try to get a pulse on that from that perspective. So I think that we should get an update of where we think we will be in five years, four years. But it's going to take time, but they will fill up, okay? And there will also be a lot of empty nest holes then in Amherst that won't have students. So is there really going to be an impact huge or not huge? I think we need to study that.
And thanks for bringing up this angle. So part of this process, again, the board joined the help program with OFCC a few months ago. There is part decision, part of that is an enrollment study we're doing right now. We submitted most of the screens we had, so I think there's one more left I still have to do. But they're going to investigate all of those things as well. So hopefully, yeah, hopefully the June retreat will have information, if not, it's out of our hands. But we'll try to give an update of what we, what we've done, okay?
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And we will, we will have the opportunity to have that updated again before we are submitted into a particular enrollment. So he lead is starting that process right now. They pull housing permits, they, they look at economic development documentation or things like that, see where there are TIPS. And they look at age restricted developments and single family homes and all of that. But we did ask at the last Facility Advisory Committee meeting, if, if we do that enrollment study now, it does that cement our future enrollment numbers? And it does not. We, we can generate that again based on a few simple steps.
And I think it's something that, that we might want to consider that we, someone on, on this board or administration, we may want to start attending some township meetings. Just because we know what goes on in Amherst council reports, okay? But in Amherst Township, we don't know that. So we don't have all of the insight to what is their master plan in developing more and more and more. Because, you know, there's 200 and so townhouses being built at the core route. Is, originally wasn't part of what we had talked about. And those are all family oriented, that's a whole family oriented. So I just think there's a lot there.
So the question, you were just, I guess, I thought aside to hear about empty nesters in the city of Amherst.
In the city of Amherst.
So would you think the outskirts will be more like students? And if so, that would have an impact on transportation?
It, it, it may, but there may not be, but I think we can consolidate some routes when we do that. Because as the people transition, and I'm just going to use, let's say, Apple Orchard or Raven Glen. Some of those people will stay in those homes, but there won't be any school age children. So you may be able to do one whole route through two communities. It might just be a longer route from that perspective. But I, but some of those homes will sell, which will have new people because they're going to move to the age restricted communities. So I think that there's a lot playing there. Because there's an age restricted community going over here by Toyota. Okay, so some of, some of the people that live in the Amherst School District may move there, which means that the traditional home will be available for people that have children that will be going to school. But I do think the, the targeted, some of the targeted new builds in the township will be all new students. They're not going to be replacement students, they're going to be new students that are going to come here. You're going to see the same thing happen in Amherst Township that you've seen happening in Midwood Road. In my, in my opinion. Which it has exploded with housing in the world, in the world or the township area. I just think that we knew that at some point in time this would happen. But it's happening quicker than I think we thought it would because the township has moved rather quick. I mean, in the Amherst property, there's only a couple of slots of land left to do anything with. That's what I was talking, that's what I'm thinking about. But yes, it will have its impact on busing, but I think that it, it can be worked through. I don't think you'll need more buses per se, I think there'll just be.
I'm worried about the price of fuel.
The routing of how those buses operate. Any other thoughts, Michael?
Oh yeah, no more. So no, Mr. Rango asked for an update on transportation and our project. As the board, probably the community does know, that we've had some delays over the months with the project itself for many important, very good reasons. But it delayed the project a little bit. For example, the wetland study, which, which took quite a bit of time bringing outside a group to come in. Tied to that was the engineering who had to come in last two months, do some additional work, which they cleared everything beautifully. Stormwater permits were taking a little bit longer, all the building permits and working with township and other, other entities. And also complex utilities, because we do, are getting electric, water, sewer, kind of all different entities. It's a little bit complex, more than just, you know, one service provided for everything. But I want to give the board an update that there is a final stormwater approval meeting on April twenty-fifth, which at that meeting, that everything's approved, then we can move, the next day, start moving dirt, doing something. So the original, way back early, the thought was we'd hopefully be done around August, September. I think that moved to December with all the other issues. It's, it's possible now that we can't move dirt till this April, we, we could be looking at with the winter. It could easily be next April is when it opens. So again, we'll see how the construction starts going and doing dirt over the summer. We'll keep you updated, but again, we're just trying to be honest and truthful that because of some of these delays, especially over the winter months, it just prolong even further, so, okay? Moving on then quickly to the athletics project. As you can see, that's happening right now. Tennis courts have been removed. The underground water storage that we have planned has all been dug out. They're going to start placing the actual units and infrastructure into the hole that's out there as well. They're grading and leveling all around tennis courts right now, the northwest corner of the football field. They're pushing the dirt up from the digging out of the water storage. Drains will start being connected to that once that's in from the north part of the field. And the visitor stands may be removed this week. And if not, right after, come a relapse. The question is basically, if we remove them now, will everything be? The question is basically if we remove them now, will everything be closed off, sealed and safe for comic relays? If not, then we'll just wait and do it right after. So, safety will be the main issue, whether they are poured out this week or right after next week. Uh, good news, neighbors have been wonderful to work with, absolutely wonderful, um, and supportive, especially because of the underground water stores, so thank you to the board for doing that, they're appreciative of that. And then also, just that the clay soil, which was one of the big issues for both projects, what's underground? Well, that could cause us to use a lot of our owner's contingency. Well, good news is it's good clay soil, so we're actually able to move that soil from the ground where it is now, move it to start leveling and grade the other areas. So that was just, it's just great news, we never know what you pull out of the ground, so that's just wonderful news on that part of the project, okay? And then real quick, there's two decisions I'd like the board to, to discuss tonight, and, uh, you can make a decision if you want to, or we can kind of just give us feedback to go back. The first one is on the athletic decision. So above the underground water storage area is going to be just a grass field, okay? That's part of the project. When they fill after the storm underground water containment unit, they're gonna backfill with dirt, raise it up, level it off, add six inches of topsoil and plant the grass field. So we could use it for what we use in the past, shot put practice and other things. We had discussed and maybe you thought it all too, that, that could be a potential area for a, a, a future parking lot or maybe some area where people park, if, if people are using tennis courts quite a bit, the pickleball courts. Maybe for remove the parking behind the building here at steel and kind of put it out there. Again, no decision to do that, but it's a possibility. If we go to do that in the future, they would want to backfill not with dirt, but with proper, uh, three oh, three, three forty, three oh four. Aggregate, like, I thought you said, uh, the stone, the proper stone to support like a park, to support a parking lot, right? So they would fill it back not with soil, it fills with stone, and then they put topsoil on, it'd still have fuel on top of it, but it was to be prepared for the future, for if we ever do that, we won't have to dig out all of the backfill dirt to then put the stone back in. It's one of those things we talked about before, when, when the ground's opened up, it's an opportunity to maybe do something for the future, possibly not. The cost for that would be about forty thousand dollars if we do that. If we don't, we'll just fill the dirt, put a grass field on it, and if we ever do that in the future, we just dig all out, it costs more, but it's just be, it'd be, it'd be, maybe a wise decision. There's no right or wrong here, and again, there's no decision to put a parking lot there or something, but it is, that's a nice little area to do some extra parking if you like.
Right here with like the business, where will that go?
So, yeah, this is.
It's gonna change.
It's gonna change.
It's gonna change.
It'll go over here, yes, it was over here, now it's going to go over there.
There is, there's one field right here.
Shot put, this shot put maybe, yeah.
Where is that happening for?
Uh, they're, they're putting it on the bar side tennis courts, so, uh, well, the ground, yeah, so, so, uh, there'll be directions. Those students and families, athletes who have to go through the building, but we'll, we'll mark it through, you know, they've all been learned for weeks that they know that they have construction going on and won't be able to just walk directly from here to there, you have to go through the building.
So facilities, I assume that you've heard about the parking lot underground grass field already for today or not?
No, because, uh, the reason I brought it here today was because it came up at Thursday's meeting, and again, this is, this is, decision has not been made right now, but I said, well, if it came up Thursday, we're meeting off today, might as well share it with everyone same time. So no, no one's, no one considered that, but.
The alternate for the underground detention was approved and accepted by the board and the GMP. This is preparing that, the, on top of the underground detention for a future parking lot. If that's what we, we, I, I think it was between thirty-two and forty thousand dollars, bucks for the additional aggregate, additional nine inches of aggregate.
Just wanted to share, we can discuss, we can think about it, we say.
I think it's good and prices will only go higher, so.
Any other discussion, any thoughts?
I don't know, I, I think right now, I'd, I'd rather keep the forty, put it towards what we know we're gonna be doing. I mean, what, what, you know better than, right, what, what's the probability when you're parking out of there? Uh, yeah, we've, we've just discussed it as we talk about all the options, uh, because it is right on the road, and it would probably be, I don't know if Joey wants to speak, how many staff park behind here in the building, that we might be losing parking. But again, really might just be for the community to find, you know, we, we have people blocked and have road open. So it's just, I thought.
Where do people park now for tents? Where do they pick, where do they park now, they come to play tennis here, where do they take the parking?
They usually line the road if they come to play tennis, right? Yeah, some staff never shake their, that's it, yeah.
We're losing about thirty spots, to answer your question, I would ballpark.
Currently? Currently?
Currently, I mean, our counselors, our whole office staff, teachers down on this wing utilize these two spots over here, so. That's an estimate, but I'd say around thirty spots on both, one by the old secretary, one right here.
So how much, how many spots were the new ones, yeah?
That's what we can plan on getting later, this is just, just have the base there.
Picture that one strip that they just put in an hour, so that's twenty-eight spots, right? And that's one strip, so you get twice that over here, I would assume.
I would say you can see a layout of it first.
That's my, sorry, okay.
Yeah.
If you have a question, you can send it to.
I would just ask this question as we take a look at it.
Yeah.
Why, why are we going to put grass there now, when we could always use parking? Maybe it makes more sense to just get across to make it a parking lot now and be done with it. Because if we're moving, if we already are displacing people, even if we designate that that's where staff has to park. So I think that we should do a little bit of, we don't have to make that decision today, but I think we should look at that, what if we just create that space to be a parking lot right now? It probably would be cheaper in the long run, um, than to just fill it in, I mean, it's gonna add a little bit to the filter, but I haven't seen what it is, it's not gonna add that much. I mean, because we know we spent almost twenty thousand dollars for twenty parking spaces. So we've got everything going on here, why don't we look at that? So I think we should look at making it parking now as part of this project. And that way we have it, when I mean, when we need parking, we need it, when we don't need it, we don't need it. What's it gonna be used for as green space? Not pretty, it, it's gonna look nice, that's exactly right, we're gonna cut it, all that good stuff. Any, any part? All right, so I, I just think we should look at that as well, so you could, maybe you can have that back to us by the next board meeting or prior to the board meeting, so if we could have a discussion about that.
Okay, yeah, do more research. And the second, um, I have a real quick decision is, um, you know, you've kind of heard and I know Mark and Teresa have been a part of this a little bit, is the going back and forth between Amherst Power and First Energy Power at the transportation sector. Uh, both are options, uh, I think we're getting to the point where C.T. Taylor and, uh, GPD are asking us what, what we want to do, which direction we want to go. So, um, there's basically pros and cons to both, the costs kind of end up upfront, just kind of evening out. So, either way, either First Energy's gonna design the poles, the line, the transformer, or GPD's gonna do, go with Amherst Power. The pros for Amherst Power are, uh, the lower rates, actual rates of electricity, uh, they work with us faster, uh, that's the recommendation probably from C.T. Taylor because of working with them at the Powers of Energy Building, how responsive they are. And the pros for First Energy is First Energy owns the lines and the poles and the transformer down the path. So, um, kind of want a direction on what the board's thinking and your thoughts on that.
I think we should go with Amherst.
So we're allowed to vote Amherst though, change the plan on that?
Yes.
Yeah, so I spoke with the mayor, he, he said we can send a request for Amherst Power, so for the transportation bill.
What you mean by First Energy, so something happens, they'll come out and do something.
Right, so in the future, because they'll own the poles, the lines, if something were to happen like a lightning strike or something, they would come out, they would take care of the problem. With Amherst Power, because we have a city power on township property, we'll just own the poles and the line, so if something were to happen, uh, we, what we normally do in that situation is city will take care of us and then they'll just build us, so.
I think the relationship is a, is a big one.
Have, have any other than C.T. Taylor? Have they, have we, anybody here sat down with the mayor, other than up to request?
No, just me, Chuck and then from GPD.
So what's your thoughts if you and somebody, Chuck, one of us meet with the mayor and discuss this? Because I guess part of my issue is when, and I, I agree with Teresa, I, I think my first thought would be to stay with Amherst, but they turned us down once. And we started the process with First Energy now, so now they're in the midst of doing their due diligence and, and we're gonna go a different way. So I, I, I think we owe to ourselves to at least sit down with the mayor and see what he brings to the table before any decision today.
I agree with that, we can give an update, we can take our requests personally to him, but discuss it first and I'd be happy to go with, with Mark if you want to volunteer or.
I'm not on that committee. But I also think that we would need to want to make sure that it's not going to stall the project.
Yes.
I think that which one is going to move the fastest?
And that's what C.T. Taylor would say from experience with First Energy, is that you're on their timeframe, they'll, they, they would recommend, they, they aren't gonna make a first recommendation, they, they want us to decide, but they would recommend going with Amherst because of our relationship in the past with Powers. And they're already working, work with them versus they know what First Energy's like.
But, but my question there would be then, and I'm just being the devil in the advocate, is Amherst in a position to get those poles as many as we're gonna need as fast as we're gonna need them?
We can ask those questions.
Because I think First Energy probably has poles waiting to go up. You know, they may not be as strict to get them to us from that perspective or manpower, but those would be some of the kind of things that I would be concerned about.
We also know that the city of Amherst has the transformer that we need. It's not true, right? It's promised, it's not, it was promised to us, so we know that that is, time is of the essence, we've already had about the delay, so time is of the essence here, so.
Speaking of poles, if we're, we are responsible for poles, does C.T. Taylor have an outlet where we can just go somewhere and get them? Do we have to get them from the city?
No, that would be for example, GDP writing up like, just like the design of the poles and their location, everything that, that would be done in-house with GPD, C.T. Taylor. They probably need it out real quick and get someone to do that for us, yeah, versus waiting on First Energy.
So you're gonna schedule that meeting sooner than later?
Yes, absolutely. This is, are we, with me or?
I'll go with him. Miss West, what's your order?
Margaret, welcome to go.
Margaret?
I'll busy that.
I mean, if you want me to go, I can go, but I think the facilities should go.
I don't know if I'm going, I'm just wanna make sure.
Teresa, I think you should go because.
All right, I'll go, just let me know.
That's your committee, let it go.
All right, set that up.
All right, anything else, Mr. Morgan?
No, but thank you, this is what boards are supposed to do, I was supposed to probably give that resolution, so.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm just, it's a great decision. And I'm sure that Assistant Superintendent Sarah will give us a whole bunch to talk about also.
I have nothing but exciting news to share with the board tonight.
You always do.
Um, see, that's why you guys saved it for right now in the, um, meeting. Uh, I wanted to share that with, uh, our district RN, uh, Erin Bernal has been working with I.C. Ohio, which is a program through the Ohio, um, optometric, optometric? What, opt, oh, yeah, optometric. Um, optometric, uh, foundation, and they come out, they work with school districts to come out and do free screenings for kids. Um, these are full, um, Dr. Andrea Fisher's coming out, she works for Metro House, she's donating her time to come and provide, um, vision appointments for our students. These are students, they were students that had, for one reason or another, failed their vision screenings, uh, this year, and so we sent referrals to parents to see if they were interested. Um, these are for Powers and A.J.H. families, because we're trying to just see how this is all gonna work out, this is the first time we've done something like this. But on Friday, we have twelve students who will be getting their, um, vision screened and checked by Dr. Andrea Fisher, and if required, they can fit them for glasses at that time. And it takes about three weeks for the glasses to come in, and she will come back once the glasses are ready, and she will meet with each of the kids, make sure they are fitted, ready to go, and these kids will get some, some new glasses. So we have twelve students participating, one from the junior high, and the rest are anywhere from our pre-k kiddos to third grade. So, um, that's happening on Friday, the appointments will be at the board office, so we'll be escorting people over to us. Um, and we have folks from public health coming out to volunteer, um, as well as our own staff, gonna help out with that.
And there's no cost?
No cost to families whatsoever for this, and for the glasses if they're.
I wonder if you had to pay for any of the glasses?
Nope, nope, it's all covered.
Mm-hmm, yeah, maybe there'll be a cost for the glasses.
Yeah, no, covered. Um, and then coming next week, what has become our annual, um, uh, summer activity fair will be next Wednesday from five to seven. I went from being worried about having enough activities for folks to participate in to now like, do we have too many? Um, but it's gonna be a great time, they're working with the school counselors, like Christie Diaz, to, um, get our face painters ready to go, our counselors are gonna have a table. We have almost forty vendors coming out this year, um, and so it's gonna be an event that's going to span both the Powers and A.J.H. campuses. Um, I also wanted to share a local sports and clubs guide that was put together by Kelly Simonson, our wellness coordinator. Um, her and Rachel Mallon worked to put this, um, pamphlet together, it's been shared out through district communications, it has all sorts of summer programming and different associations and, and programs that we can get kids involved in. So, that's something, and then on that same day, Mr. Fredo referenced our storybook trail. Um, summer activity fair starts at five o'clock, but I would like to extend an invitation to all of you board members to, and to arrive at four forty-five. We'll be doing a ribbon cutting, um, with storybook trail, uh, immediately preceding the summer activity fair. Um, this was Kelly Simonson, our wellness coordinator, had applied for a grant through Lorraine County Public Health and received the grant. And so, um, I realize it says five P.M., it's supposed to say four forty-five. I see where you're going, right?
It's in our calendar.
Yes, yes. Homegrown contracting is who installed the signs, they're all there, um, and storybook trail, they donated their time and labor for the, um, installation of the signs, also they build us more ribbon materials. Um, and then the public library, this is a partnership with public health, public library, and this homegrown contracting, the public library, it's already selected book book. They are going to fill into each of the, um, uh, signs, so along the way, it'll be a different book or page from the story that kids can stop and, and read through as they go along, um, the kind of pride trail that's outside the junior high. So four forty-five on the thirtieth, um, there will be balloons, so you will know where you are going for the ribbon cutting. Um, and then, um, immediately then will be at the activity fair.
So is each location a different story or is it the same?
Each location is part of the same story.
So it's one book the whole way?
One book the whole way.
Each, so when you're done, you'll have read the book?
You'll have read the whole book.
Okay, I didn't know whether it was just giving you a summary or a snippet of that, so that you would then download the book?
Well, and they're gonna rotate books, so each, each month there'll be a new book in the library.
There'll be a new book every month.
Yeah, so like, so when I was talking to Claire about it, she also mentioned like, if a staff member wanted to, you could put like a lesson, if you're like putting different things around the path, so that your students are walking the path like a new lesson.
Yeah.
That's cool.
I, I was just curious whether. I, I was just curious whether it was a story the whole way around or it was just about different stories?
Same story all the way around, but from beginning to end.
Right.
Um, and then just a reminder, our best buddies friendship block, um, we're currently third in fundraising, um. So just, you know, we're up there, but we're not quite where I want us to be. Um, so that is going to take place this year at the Metro Park Zoo, the walk, um, check-in is at eight o'clock and the walk begins at nine o'clock. Um, and then celebrate until noon, but then if you are there for the walk, you have the whole day, but you can hang out at the zoo, um, and enjoy zoo activities. So. That concludes my report. Anyone have a question?
Are there t-shirts for this, like last year?
Uh, there'll be t-shirts at the, at, um, I don't know that they did separate t-shirts.
This year?
This year.
And when you register, they still ask you?
They have the actual best buddies shirt that you can get when you, you go check in.
Okay, any other questions for Sarah?
Thank you.
Uh, J B S update, J B S board met last Thursday. Which is our normal meeting day. We recognized all of these students who were, um, in competitions and have moved on to, some of, are not moving on, the ones that are moving on to state competitions national competitions and all those, but most of the state competitions are done. I meant to bring you the sheet of paper that listed all the students and I walked off and I'm lighting the calendar, so I make sure you don't get that. But, um, it was a great number of students who are moving on to national competition from that perspective. That'll happen throughout the summer. Um, the other thing that has gone very smoothly has been with the parking lot. Uh, I know that there has been all kinds of conversations with all school districts about, uh, when they went back from spring break that certain parking lots would be closed and, but I will, I am happy to report as I reported at Thursday's board meeting that I had the opportunity to be at something at the J B S last Wednesday. So I was there when school was, was dismissed. Typically, I have to wait quite a while to get out of the parking lot. I will say that the student population and those of us who were there for an event uh, got out of the parking lot before the buses pulled out because they're moving them so fast out that while the students are there, if the students get to their car and get going and, uh, if you go out on the north end, um, it, it never stopped. So it has been probably something that will remain when the parking lot is done, but the student population will remain where it has been and some other parking lot will be replaced because there has been a lot of discussion about that, but it has, it has been flawless. There's been no concern. So I just wanted to report that because I have received calls that there are students who are gonna be late for work because they wouldn't be able to get out. That's not been the case from what I've heard and from what I actually participated in, so I just wanted to share that. I'll be glad, uh, the greenhouse, I know there's competition with greenhouse plants from here and there, but I'd just like to make you know that greenhouse will open, I believe, on the twenty-eighth for sales from that perspective, so if you need some plants other than flowering plants, they would also have that, so keep that in mind when you're thinking about some of the plantings that you may be doing this year. I'm glad entertaining questions you have about the J B S. Um, the recognition is, I believe, on the eighteen, seventeenth, I know it.
Saturday?
It's not a Saturday. Yeah.
I checked about May.
May.
Yeah.
Oh, I know. I think it's May fifteenth. Yes, it's May fifteenth, Black River Lake. Same day as the. Okay, so I'm sure you'll get an invitation to that if you already haven't gotten that, so. Any other questions from the J B S? I, I will, I do know that one of the Amherst students participated. I don't remember her name, Zoe maybe? She's in cosmetology, right? She, she's an Amherst student. Um, she participated in the Rotary Stride Program at the J B S and she won a thousand dollar scholarship for that and we'll move on to the district interviews for that, uh, also, so. But she is an Amherst student, she's planning on attending, attending Agribusiness University in nursing, sort of by the discipline. Just share that as well. Nothing else, we'll move on. To personnel recommendations, well, is there any board updates? Tom Professor, do you have anything for us? I was almost gonna, I'll get you today. No, it's not, I forgot, it didn't.
Uh, just two quick things, I'll just do a quick one for, so tomorrow there is, um, a understanding of House Bill ninety-six oh, the budget that will be, um, that's finalized and, so, um, tomorrow's webinar is at noon and they will discuss the housing version of House Bill ninety-six oh, it went through the house and now it's in the senate to make their changes and all that interesting things to that, so, um, if you want, of course, be a website, you can register for that pretty well. Certainly will be sitting in and taking notes, um, so that's that. In the, um, the Delta, I guess, we developed a, we were, um, the other state's office and Miss Amy Fryn's office, um, launched financial, financial health indicators for, um, public schools and trade school. So that will go into effect in Amherst. And there are more opportunities to learn more about it on the webinar. Uh, two are tomorrow, so at two o'clock, two o'clock, Macadamia List, um, and then on Thursday this week at ten A M and two P M as well. So, um, I think I emailed something about this a couple of weeks ago. When we had our legislative meetings, we, uh, the financial health indicators, all the public school districts in a few weeks will be getting well, not all of them, but the ones that are like what they call the critical financial health will be getting, the school board president and the superintendent will be getting a report, we will all get one, I don't think we do, so, um. Yeah, that's it. So I will email more of that information after, but, um, those are two educational opportunities and update opportunities about the annual budget and some of the changes coming out. And.
Isn't there a big meeting on the third where school board members are only at a, yet? On Saturday, there's a, yes, I think there is. But you might wanna double check that. Okay, I think it's on Saturday. There's a thousand things happening on the third.
Oh, that's the, um.
Board, board leadership, yeah.
It's the second, the third.
Yeah.
Second, yeah.
Okay. I just have to do things on that, so I know that there's something on the third, because somebody regu-, registered someone. Not from here, but.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Anything else for the board updates, any other board member would have? If not, then we would move on to item number twelve on the agenda this evening, which would be personnel recommendations.
Alright, so we have, uh, twenty-one items. Obviously, at this time of year, a lot of personnel items happening with contracts and so on. Uh, so again, thank everyone for attending. Those who are item B, the new employees who are coming on board, it's awesome to meet them tonight. Also, just a quick reminder, item C, D, and E, uh, every year we non-renew supplemental contracts, extra activities, substitutes, entitled tutors, only then rehire those back in the fall, so that's the yearly thing always. Uh, otherwise, there are, um, routine items here for twelve, uh, so I'd like to recommend items twelve A through twelve U.
So, second.
We have a motion in the second for items twelve A through U. Is there any discussion or comments on any of those items? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis, I'm, Mrs. Wapples, Dr. Messer.
I'm.
Mr. Zappa.
I'm.
Mr. Engel.
Item thirteen would be the educational recommendations that motion has.
Yeah, we have seven items, although, uh, sorry, I'd like to recommend removing item E, which was the L, uh, C C C data sharing agreement. I reached out to Cindy Kushner at L C C C and asked to make sure this was the final, final draft, I guess. Um, and she emailed me around five P M and asked if we could maybe wait until May to double check, which I had a few board member questions also, uh, for board members about, you know, opting out and so on, which I could ask, so I'd like to recommend we, um, the board, um, approve items A, B, C, D, F, and G, which is, and not, not higher E.
So we're just deleting E?
Right, correct.
So.
We have a motion in a second for educational recommendations, A through D, including E, I mean, F and G, omitting E. Discussion or comments on any of those?
Um, I think this is all in for summarizing exhibit for T C, so all the critical items, because I had asked about that last year. Making a nice summary so we can quickly and go over them and understand what all the. Pretty good.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I got educational recommendations, I can't speak that very well. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis, I'm, Mrs. Wapples, Dr. Messer.
I'm.
Mr. Zappa.
I'm.
Mr. Engel.
I. We would entertain business recommendations, item fourteen.
There are three this evening. The first one is our revised contract with Germantown, with C and banquet. Um, B was what we discussed earlier about the vouchers for Ohio and vouchers, um, resolution, more like to consider. And then also, uh, C, which, um, Mark and Teresa looked at as part of the city for those grounds, which was the request by the city to do the dye and smoke tests on our lateral lines underground to make sure there's no, I guess, illegal tapping in or other issues when we go to dig up the ground and install drainage to make sure that there's no problems. Uh, and so it required a very detailed work to be done with G P D architects to kind of, uh, hire out to complete the test, but then G P D has to do, they just get the data back, they have to do all the work and putting all of this into a report to get back to the city, so it's quite extensive. Um, we did meet with the mayor on that. We didn't wanna hold back the project and all, we agreed to, yeah, move forward, we agreed of course to, to do the right thing and do the smoke and dye test on our large piece of property here at C, so. So those are three items on for business recommendations.
We have a motion in a second, we have a motion in a second. Uh, is there questions or comments?
I have a question about you said tapping in.
Yeah, so, so real quick, so in this area, not just our school, school property, but in this area, when it rains, the city says that they have way too much storm water or storm water, whatever, um, that then should be happening over a few inches of rain. And so they believe that possibly over time, different houses, residents have possibly, you know, tapped in your gutter system, downspouts into the wrong line or, you know. So, so they believe in the area, there's many issues over the years, which you'll never find them unless you either test for it or when you dig something up at any property, um, they ask you to do the research to see if there's a problem, so.
And, and this is something that we should be paying for even though it includes the home?
So when we met with the mayor, we, and if you look at the G P, if you look at the G P D attachment, uh, you can see that it is we are simply, yes, we discussed that, we are simply doing just our property.
Yeah.
Also, Mr. Zappa raised a question of are we paying for that in the city's main line? Or just the lateral lines off the main line, which would be a problem? And we double checked and highlighted areas of testing are just the lateral lines, so we're not paying for the main line to be done, next, the city should take care of it.
So in doing that, we always have storm water issues in the parking lot, or we used to. Do we still have those issues on the south parking lot?
You resolved that? You resolved that.
We did.
Yes.
We haven't had, that water hasn't been laying in that parking lot like it used to and all that stuff. So I'm just saying, if we're testing that, are we testing to make sure that it's only our water going into the, and if you said we fix that, that's great. I don't recall.
I mean, that's, that's what the dye and the smoke does, so, yeah, it shouldn't.
But that's too different.
That was too different.
Yes, it is.
It's too different.
It's too different. We're not touching that.
We're just touching that.
We're touching over.
But none of that ties into that's what I'm asking, and we don't know that.
No, based on the schematic, no.
Okay, because I thought maybe some of this somehow tied in somewhere over here, which caused part of that problem, but I don't know, just asking.
Do we have a, do we have a, we have a line, lateral line from all the way over to St. Joe's
Uh-huh.
Across the baseball field and it goes right under this building.
Right. So that's our line.
So again, this, this whole, the building used to be residential plots, so over the years, we know.
We know.
Yep.
Alright, any other questions on those recommendations, business recommendations? Is there any other questions or comments on the business recommendations? Okay? If not, call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis, I'm, Mrs. Wapples. And Dr. Messer.
I'm.
Mr. Zappa. Mr. Engel.
Ah. We will move into executive session. Oh, you had a question?
I, I have a question also.
Is that what this is under board update?
Well, too bad, I just thought of it, I'm old. Um, so when we build Powers or A J H and Powers, two board members always went to the construction meetings and I'm wondering if we should be doing that now so that we know what's happening in the project?
Yeah, so G P D, just last meeting on Thursday, just handed over the architects, G P D's always run the meetings, they handed over the running of the meetings, now C T Taylor, which is the firm doing all the construction overseeing the project. So, um, yeah, we, if you like, we can establish and get the effect of it now that we have actual projects happening and now get to, uh, on, on to calls. Well, actually, no, they did mention, we might start doing, they did kinda mention we might start doing it in person now, possibly, on site, so, um, so the, the transitions happening, we'll find out the details when you.
Alright, alright, thank you.
I, I neglected to mention something also.
Oh, no, you can't, that's under board discussion.
Well, it's, it's part of your committee, but I want to report on, okay? Uh, I want to publicly acknowledge and thank, um, the staff at the junior high for getting everything cleaned up out of the building, um, because it, it's been on the to-do list for a couple of years. And, uh, as I walk around that building, uh, it is all gone. It has all been cleaned up from the twenty-five years of construction material that has laid back there
Yeah.
is gone. Uh, they cleaned it up, it looks a hundred percent better. It's not perfect, but it looks a hundred percent better. There's no chunks of concrete laying there, there's no brick laying there, there's no old fencing line in there because I think that building's almost twenty-five years old.
Yeah.
So, um, that stuff's been laying back there for eternity, but it is gone, so, uh, it looks much nicer, okay, so. Thank everyone who made that happen. Uh, item fifteen, move to executive session. Yes, we have a need for executive session with the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints. for compensation of employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official license, or student request of public hearing, as well as E, matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules of state statute. We entertain a motion to go into regular session.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, uh, call the roll. There'll be no action to take after that, correct?
Right.
There'll be no action to take.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
I'm.
Dr. Messer?
I'm.
Mrs. Wackel?
I'm.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.